Hi, this is the regular October meeting for the Dayton Development and Industrial Commission. This meeting is being recorded for publication on the town YouTube channel and for replay on Dayton Channel nine TV. If you could all join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the probable British stands, one nation, indivisible.
So first I wanted to welcome Barbara. She's our newest member, has been sworn in. So thank you for joining us. We really appreciate the help.
Glad to have you.
Thank you so much, guys and ladies.
The first item of business, I didn't, I forgot to print out copies of the agenda for everybody, but it's kind of a short agenda tonight. Uh, one was review, um, the October third business networking event. So I know John was there, Paul was there, you were there, Lenny was there. I don't know if, um, and if you had any initial comments or feedback or about how it went or the success or.
I thought it was overall successful. It was a good, good attendance. But I would have liked to see more residents there. There's lots of businesses and lots of officials. So, uh, I think we'll have to just continue to develop ways to try to drive out more attendees rather than vendors and things like that.
I, I totally agree with Paul and, and I'm wondering was the time? The early five, five PM, if that was too early.
Um, it was the same as last year, but I like, and it could be a factor. So my understanding, John, at, at the end of the day, we did have. I remember the official count of how many signed up. It was including Berkeley. I think it was over twenty businesses signed up. Like eighteen Dayton and maybe six Berkeley. But I believe that only ten Dayton businesses actually came that evening. That sounds about right. And, or you're on mute?
Yeah, yes, I'm you. I'm you.
Yep. Yep. Okay, sorry. Um, I do have the numbers in front of me. If you want, if you want the official numbers.
Sure.
Okay, so we invited, um, a total of four twenty-eight, three hundred and one from Dayton and one twenty-three from Berkeley. I'll just stick with the Dayton numbers actually, okay? So three, three hundred and one were invited. Uh, registered fourteen.
Fourteen.
So a response rate of about five percent, attended seven. So we only had a fifty percent, um, attended rate from Dayton. As opposed to people registered. So, um, you know, yeah, there was six, it was half as many, uh, people didn't show up as did. Yep. So that's, that's where we are. We really only had seven Dayton businesses and, you know, very, um, sad to have to report that.
I did speak to one business and I, I'd sent Chris Silva some information. Um, he had come last year. He said he was, he enjoyed it. He was going to come this year, but he had an electrical contracting class that he had to attend. But he offered to, I just said, you know, what, any feedback you could give us about? What might make it more worthwhile for you? And he said, sure, he'd be willing to sit down and talk about it. Hmm. At some point, I didn't know if, um, you or Chris wanted to join me in that, but, um, I know that. Chris or the chamber, um, had said, you know, possibly next year, they may look at switching things up a little bit. And maybe moving into Rainham or doing something slightly different just to either expand the scope or change it up a little bit. But the numbers were kind of disappointing this year. So, you know, the money raised from sponsors to put it on and then. Whether it was justified or not in terms of attendance was, uh, just, it's getting them food for thought, you know, for planning for next year. So.
Yep.
If they added the theme of a job fair, would that maybe bring more people?
Um, I know John, not you specifically, but your wife has had experiences job there. I've also, one of the jobs I have, um, a company up in Brockton. They've had jobs fair and it's the same thing that John has reported about his wife. He used to work at Stoner College, which is. Job fair are very hard to put on and very hard to get attendance to. You would think that'd be extremely popular, but they're not.
I, I can say that, you know, I have followed up on a number of people, Dayton businesses that expressed an interest in job fair. And when we started to engage with them and talk to them about them, we lost interest. So I'm not sure that would be a driver. And really, we, we need businesses to attend, right? I mean, they're the ones that need. Uh, it's not, we, we're not looking for recruits, right? We're looking for businesses, you know, so I don't know. It was very disappointing, guys and ladies. And, you know, um, Laura, you, you're a, you're a business owner. You attended for the first time. You know, what, maybe what were some of your, um, you know, thoughts about it? Because I didn't have a chance to chat with you and I hate to put you on the spot, but what did you think?
That's what I mean. I didn't know if you really wanted the truth.
I absolutely.
Yeah. Um, I mean, it's, I received the postcard. From the chamber, but that's really all I can remember getting as a, a notification to do this. Um, I'm a busy person as a small business. What's my return on the investment of thy time to attend? Um, I didn't really know what was going to happen there.
In terms of notification, um, there were other notifications and I may have left you off with some of them because I knew you weren't here.
Okay.
But two email blasts were sent out to all the businesses in town that we had emails for. And there were multiple, uh, Facebook postings on all the Dayton pages about. In a variety of formats, one of them people to the chamber, one of them people to the DBIC, one explaining the event. One saying, you know, here's all the things we do. The event is one of them. So, um, that was the notification. But the answer to your second question, I don't know. I mean, that's. That's a good question. I mean, what, it's your time. So what are you expecting to get out of it? And I think what's offered, whether you get it out of it or not, is, um, a lot of the service sponsors that attend. Namely places like Mechanics and Baybanks and Seed and Mass Development and Neighborhood Works and. You know, and SCORE and the Chamber itself, um, are there. And they serve a need for people looking for financing or guidance or that sort of thing. Now, if you have an established business and you're not really looking for that kind of service. Then the fallback that we thought would be the draw would be the ability to meet and discuss issues of any sort with town officials. You know, the selectmen were there, Paul was there, um, you know, there were other people there that, uh, were available, but, you know. I guess it would depend upon your circumstances, whether that's really a, a draw or not.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So like, I don't know what all of those businesses do. So that, that's, you know. I'm not knowledgeable of what they could offer me. I got to find out that night, but I did it because I was part of this group. And there was something else that I was, oh, so yes, town officials were there, but maybe if there was more of like a presentation. Of like, I don't know if every person would have the, you know, guts to go up to you and say. What can you do for me or I need this, this and this? So maybe if it was like a little presentation and then like questions or, you know, from the audience.
How's this for it? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Being, uh, coming off of that. If someone from the governor's office or Jake Ashenclaus's office would be like a speaker or be there. To address business concerns, would that attract more people, more businesses?
Almost like having a keynote speaker.
You know, and, and for some of the politicians at that level, that would be a great opportunity for them.
Yeah.
Especially this year. One of the, um, major players. On the business community, business outreach, outreach around the world is Senator Mark Pacico. I'm wondering if, if Mark. Came spoke about what the state of Massachusetts can do for businesses, but also a give and take if that might attract more people.
So if I may, um, we have a, um, what is it called? The legislative update. The chamber does one quarterly with, uh, our representative Hawkinsloss and Mark Pacico and, um, Carol, um, Carol.
Doherty.
Yeah, Carol Doherty and, you know, all those folks and I, I'll tell you honestly, we don't have a huge. Um, uptake on, on those events either. You know what I mean? It's, it's difficult. I, I think Laura hit it on the head. You know, small business owners are straight out, right? And they're, they've only got so much time. Um, and it's, it's difficult to get their time and attention.
Maybe if we narrowed our focus a little bit, cause as you just said. Maybe a keynote speaker on something specific and topical. So rather than try to be all things to all businesses. If we were to break it down to things like, like a speaker forum, as you said, specifically, you could have it be. An event that might only appeal to one or two industries, but you could have things like real estate and construction trips. You could have a couple of speakers that are going to talk about real estate and the housing market, um, lending, things like that. Um, post COVID, I'm just making up these as topics just to kind of illustrate the concept. Um, post COVID changes in the hospitality industry, where you could have, you know, hotels, restaurants, talk about the way that. Ordering and takeout and their industries have changed and how to adapt and how to evolve. So the business owners can kind of. Take these opportunities to almost be more proactive than reactive. So it's a draw that appeals to people. Or bookkeeping for small businesses could appeal to, you know, the accountants and accountant CPAs, bookkeepers. And then there's lots of small business owners that are great at running their business, but might not necessarily. Their skillset might not necessarily be accounting or bookkeeping, who could benefit from a question and answer session with them. Um, something else that perhaps might be a good draw would be, um. Like a public event that brings in the public, something that doesn't even necessarily directly pertain to business. But allows business to be kind of ancillary to something that's going on. Like I just had a great time over the weekend at the Bristol Aggie Park there. Right? That was fantastic. Ironically, it was the same venue, right? And, uh, when we're talking about, we had difficulties with attendance for our event where that event was exploding. Cause it was stuff to do. There was, you know, there was animals. There was pumpkins. There was candy apples. There was all, you know, all kinds of things. To bring in the public. So maybe we could find events that are inviting to individuals and families to make them want to go in and participate. Like, uh, Arujos is, is doing the, um, the arts festival in a couple of weeks. And I'm sure that that will. That will be a big draw for folks to go. Um, and then as we said, took the like a, a public official. No, a listening tour or selected topics on, um, specific things that pertain to business. So that they could be like, almost like a question and answer session, as you said, where, where there might be a set agenda. So you as a small business owner can look ahead of time and you could say, nah, I don't really care about these questions. I'm going to skip this one. Or you say, oh, you know what? I wasn't wondering about this, this and this. I do want to ask questions about that. So maybe if we narrowed our scope a little bit and tried to. Put together events that are in more industry specific, even though they're less applicable to let, to, you know, they're, they're applicable to less people. They might have more draw to the people that do go. Just a thought.
Yeah. Did you have something else to suggest?
Yeah, beer. Beer tasting.
Was there food or?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Alcohol brings everybody to the same.
Well, yeah.
Especially when it's free.
I, I'm sorry.
Exactly.
Especially when it's free.
I did.
I, I said it more as a joke.
I did send an email to Chris afterwards with just a thought, which is. Obviously it's great that we're focused on Dayton. Berkeley's obviously focused on Berkeley, but the chamber is trying to doing both. But Dayton businesses don't rely. Probably even to a fraction on Dayton. Either other Dayton businesses or Dayton as their business base. They rely on a wide area, but at least. Taunton and the greater Taunton area as their business base and their suppliers and their networkers and their B two B customers. And so if they really want to connect and grow. They're probably not so focused on meeting other people in Dayton. They really want to meet people in the greater Taunton area. So expanding it, although we really like the idea of being so Dayton focused. Probably to a great extent, it helps them more to say it's Taunton focused, of which we're part. You know, that was just, you know, two cents. And so whether, you know, that affects the decisions of how to proceed next year, I don't know. But that's one thing, one more thing to consider. So.
I mean, economically, the greater Taunton area is kind of the, the rising tide that lifts the ocean up.
Yeah.
But the only question I have, um, if we do make some changes, do they really have a problem with the venue?
I don't think the venue itself. I think the venue is great.
I thought it was.
Location.
And I think about where else we could go and.
Yeah.
In this area, we're somewhat limited.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I definitely think we should plan that there will be significant changes next year.
Um, one thing that did come out of it was I got approached by somebody. I already told John this, um, who. Uh, he, he wanted to remain anonymous, but he watches our, um, YouTube. And he saw that we put out all that money for posters, $225 for posters. That, and we said, oh, these, these are going to be like thirty bucks a piece and they turned out to be seventy-five bucks a piece. So he made a cash donation to cover the cost of the posters.
Wow.
Wow, that's really nice.
Even before I had sent in the reimbursement to the accountant, so it just, it got covered.
Wow.
Amazing.
Um, so we're back to, um, other than, the only money we've sent this year would be the cost for the sponsorship of the event, which was $250. So.
Wow, that's excellent. Yeah. Thank you to our anonymous donor.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, he did have a suggestion and of like weekend coffee events, kind of like the chamber does. They don't do it weekends, but they do it like every two to three weeks. They'll have. A business usually that opens up and they have coffee, sometimes food and, you know.
Coffee connects, yeah.
One connection and, um, just a thought. I don't know whether that's something we want to consider, you know? I don't know if we have some money back in the budget, but. It'd be great. I can't die.
Yeah, Dan, I think one of the things that might be one of the serious root causes for us is, as Laura said. She didn't really get the communication, right? And I know, Dan, your response was, well, we posted it here, we posted it there, that sort of thing. Very true. But are those the places where people are going? You know what I mean? Like, I don't know, we may be having, right, a communi- a connection problem, right? A communication problem. I'm not sure. I know we tried to, we thought about the sign out in front. Um, um, and I'm not sure. I didn't see that, whether it made it or not, but, um, you know, we were going to try to put the sign out and. Uh, that sort of thing. So there, that would have been another avenue, right, for us to, um, communicate with the community. That, that's what I think maybe what our issue is. I don't know. I'll just put that out there.
I actually like the sign, um, there. I think that would remind people. Because many businesses probably signed up to attend. But when it came to the day, many things popped up. I was one of them. So. I, I, seriously, I spaced it out. I even called Dan. But he had given me his home phone and I called his house to see, is the event today? You know, the date just didn't click. Seriously. It's, uh, so I just wanted to tell you that, John, because I know you, uh, are going to pick on me later. So.
I'm not saying anything.
Sure, okay.
I, as a per- like I've actually, I'm organizing a conference for the past year. Constant emails out to remind people to register for the conference because they're like, oh yeah, I need to do that. It's on my to-do list. But then they forget. But I do notice what each time I send out a reminder. This, you know, sign up for the conference. I'll get like 25 people to register at that time. It's signs. I mean, I rarely go through this intersection over here.
Okay. Did anybody see the sign that?
I did see the sign, yeah.
I don't believe.
What's up?
Really looking.
I think, yeah, it's on his property.
Was on outside of town hall.
It was outside of town hall. Oh, yeah. Okay.
Oh, that law.
Yeah.
That's always there, right?
Yeah. I'm sorry?
That's always there. There's a sign there.
But it was for the event.
For the event.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I go by there ten times a day.
I'm always heading to Verhopis and CCOM. So now that Main Street is open again, I don't have to go down Sundas Street.
Um, so I mean, I guess, I mean, we have things to think about for, for next year and hopefully can, we'll be having this again next year. The, uh, next item I have was to review the proposed meeting day with the Board of Assessors. We, last time this year, we had thought about October. Um, and they wanted to check. They apparently have a very busy October meeting. So they're asking if we can push this to November. To have, uh, the Board of Assessors come and talk about all the questions we had given them. That would be putting us right after Thanksgiving. That would be our fourth Monday if we stick with that. And by the way, we're going to be kicked out of this building on that date because, um, Mike Mullen needs it for something going on that day. So we're going to prime time for our November meeting, which is right behind here.
What is the other?
Yeah.
What else is, what are we conflicting with?
I don't know. Leanne called me and she said, do you mind going to prime time? Mike has something going on. He needs that Monday. He needs the building. Can you? So I said, sure, we can go to prime time. So. But, um, so I'll just keep following up with them and if November works for the Board of Assessors, then that's what we can plan on. For our next meeting with them and. Try to start advertising and if I just need to get plenty of lead time from them, that, that's, they're going to meet, you know, enough. They can meet us in November so that we can push it out there for. For people to know about. Um. One thing that they've mentioned, which I know we mentioned here, but and apparently it's come up before. It just never got as much traction. But I think it's got some traction from them now is they are planning to propose a bylaw change. For minimum amounts on personal property taxes. Um, cause right now technically you own $10 in personal property taxes, you get a bill for a penny from the. You know, Board of Assessors. I don't, I mean, that's an exaggeration, but. Other towns have like the $5,000 or $10,000 minimum. I think Verhopis is 5,000, Somerset is 10,000. And if your total personal property assets are below that. Then it's just, it's a wash. They don't. They're taxing you. So they're looking into that and sounds promising that they pose something like that for maybe the June, um, town hall. Next item is review the cable business spotlights. So the Dayton House of Pizza video was posted online, uh, I think two, maybe three weeks ago. Um, this past Saturday, uh, Paul did an interview with SCORE. Um, which went really well. I don't know if you had any.
Yeah, no, uh, Linda was fantastic. I worked with Linda Foss from SCORE. She's absolutely fantastic. Um, but she frankly carried the interview. Um, she had really great experience, great answers. Um, she was obviously very well. Acclimated to a sit-down meeting type, uh, type of exchange. She tells she didn't seem nervous at all. Uh, she had great energy. I really enjoyed working with her. Yeah, yeah. The information is really high quality. Um, and hopefully, like Laura, you said that as a business owner, you want to know what's in it for me, right? And, um, I can tell you now, having not known too much about it, SCORE has a lot in it for you. If you reach out to those folks, they really have a lot of resident experts on a lot of things. And I was frankly blown away at how many different services are available and how many seasoned, experienced, qualified people that. You know, it's the services that they're capable of offering. Some of what she was describing seemed like what you would pay a big money consultant to fly out, you know. Pay some huge fee for. And, uh, I was, I was very impressed. I thought she represented the organization really well and, um. Hopefully some folks watching it will reach out and take advantage. Cause if our goal really is to encourage economic activity and encourage the development of local business. Uh, encouraging people to connect with, take advantage of SCORE, I think it'd be a huge way to do that. So I, I was very impressed and I, I learned a lot.
You, I thought you, they know, you already know John is one of those 10,000 volunteers that she meant. Yeah.
Yeah. It's a great organization and, um, you know, I'm glad that the interview went well and let's, let's hope that it helps some people, right? Um, that would be great.
Um, so I have connected with Chris Silver from the Chamber of Commerce. She'd like to do it as well. I believe she's on vacation. Through next week. So maybe once she gets back, um, we can find a date and time that works for her. Um, also some connections we made at the AGI event. Um, Neighbor Works, Sea, Bay Coast, um, we're all interested in doing it. Mike Mullen would like to do it and talk about, um, tip. But he also wants to pull in somebody for at the state level because there's a comparable state program that kind of complements tips at a local level.
Okay.
So he'd like to find a date that he can do that and then the two of them together sit down and are interviewing himself.
Great. That's good.
Yeah. There is a poster right now up in the town hall advertising this. Um, so. And I said, I think we said last time, we'll keep that up there for a month or two and then we'll swap it out with the online business directory and then put it back and. Put something up there once we know about the assessors meeting as well and. The next agenda item I had was to discuss any additional feedback on the, um, Surfit Economic Plan Update. I know we talked about it last time. Um, everybody can have a lot of lead times to digest it. So I didn't know whether there were just. Additional comments people had. And I know that Mike's planning on, you know, bringing it forward to the Board of Selectmen. Because it is something that just the economic plan update itself. We need, um, for due for an update, whether it's in this draft form or something variation of it, but, um, I didn't know if any people had anything to bring up.
Were you planning to go to ZBA before you come to us or?
Uh, I think Mike needs to go to you first, cause he needs the Board of Selectmen to, um, approve it. Or some variation on it. Um, I don't think it would go to either the planning board or the ZBA probably until maybe depending on their schedule after the new year. Because there's no, um, particular, there's suggestions in there about things around zoning.
Right.
No, nothing that says they have to do it. These are just like proposals about things that could be done in the issue of zoning area, you know, that people want to consider. So. I'm like, I doubt at this point, there's probably time to go to ZBA and planning for the end of the year. And have them have an actual discussion about it, but.
I mean, the, the planning board can make their own bylaws. ZBA can also, correct?
Hmm, I'm not really sure because they, they go on the, as things come to them, that's how they make decisions is. They're on a one-to-one.
Cause I know the planning board has a couple of bylaws that they're working on right now. Um, especially in the area of solar. Um. So the ZBA wouldn't be. Making changes to the plan?
I don't know. I mean, I don't think the planning board would be making changes to the plan either. The planning board would be a recipient of the plan. Of which they can. Reject, amend as they see fit, any of the suggestions made. But at the end of the day, there. You know, it's a slate of suggested things that would cause, you know, proposals for economic growth in the town. But I think this, the selectmen have to agree to it because it's just a general direction, you know? So is this the right general direction?
Correct.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, yeah, um, when I look at it, it said townwide recommendations and those, they're recommending zoning changes. Um, you know, and, you know, other things like protecting natural resources, uh, infrastructure and maintenance stuff. So wouldn't that, wouldn't it make sense for them, for the selectmen to, you know, bless these recommendations? And then push those down to the other commissions and committees and stuff to, you know, get those, make those things happen?
Yeah. And each of those committees has their own latitude about how or if it would be implemented in exactly that form. But yeah, like.
Zoning, zoning changes, uh, is the planning board's first that.
Oh, it is. Yeah. Not the other way around. Okay.
Yeah.
One thing that really struck me about the plan that I liked the whole. One thing that really struck me about the plan that I liked a lot was, um, the concept of what they call artisan districts. Which they defined an artisan district as a specific zoning designation for businesses that produce effectively. No noise, no traffic diversion, um, you know, things that you would essentially hardly know that they're there. And those winning approval to potentially be almost kind of nestled in residential areas, right? Places where normally you couldn't put business because it would be too disruptive, but if you have certain things that are minimally disruptive. I, I thought it was intriguing concept, but I'd be curious what it looks like in actuality. So I wonder if it would be possible for us to ask Serbit if they can. Tell us about any communities that have adopted artisan zoning districts and what that looks like and what type of businesses are there? Maybe what some of the resident feedback issues, benefits, complications have arisen. But as a concept, I thought that was pretty neat, if you have places that create no noise, no, no traffic diversion.
The problem is if it would require a change of zoning.
Right.
Then that becomes spot zoning and that's not allowed in the state of Massachusetts. The only thing that could be done is in this case, maybe, uh, the zoning board. Could grant a variance for something like that. I'm not really sure if that would go.
So maybe that's what they mean, when they, when they say, so I guess I'd be curious, like, what do, what do they mean when they say that?
In the past, there was a lot of businesses, you know, you'd have. You know, two thousand feet of, of road that was owned residential and then all of a sudden. Mr. or Mrs. Jones decided to put a, a business next door. They did it and that's grandfathered and you can't do nothing about it, but that's spot zoning.
Right.
And that is not allowed, right?
I live twenty feet next to an old defunct oil company. I know what you mean.
Um, I, but I'll ask Lizeth for examples, like, take the Massachusetts community, if you've got any place, but our example, so how they die arson zoning. You know, what's the feedback, what's the success of any? Thoughts on it, okay. Anybody else have any comment on?
Yeah, quick question, Dan, um, one of the things that I, is, I was interested in is that. It, they talk about the existing sites, right, Zenica, the Princess House site and the Spring Street Mills, but. They don't talk anything about Route forty four and, um, do you know why they may? You know, wanna just not concentrate anything along the section of Route forty four?
You asked Lizeth, I asked Lizeth and she said, this was an update to the existing economic plan, which already has. Suggestions about Route forty four, of which there weren't really any suggested changes to the, that they envisioned. Um, so, yeah.
Okay.
If you were to re-present the plan, oh, I'm sorry.
John, the. Big fear or obstacle about Route forty four development is sewage.
Yep, yep.
And there are some who want it, some who don't. There is a town, city of Taunton, who would like to work with us to, to make it happen. But money becomes an issue. But also, someone has to take the ball in a leadership role and convince. The residents of Dyson that it's necessary. And I, I could see the DDIC playing a role in that if they truly believe. It is important for the industrial development. And the tax base in Dyson. So.
So actually, that, that's interesting, I, I think, um, we talked a little bit about this before and about. Getting great, potential grant funding for infrastructure along Route forty four and, and one thirty eight, right, County Street as well. And I, I think it was you, Lenny, that said that, um, you had met with, um, Representative Arkinsloss and, you know. Said that, you know, there would be money available and that sort of thing. And, um, I don't know, at one of the legislative updates, um, that the chamber put together and that. Representative Arkinsloss, uh, uh, was attendant, I asked the question about, how do we get that started? And he actually said it starts at the grassroots level and that the town needs to be committed to be able to make these changes. Um, and they actually have to make the whole process go, um, and so. Um, how do we do that? How does one do that, right?
Well, one of the things that would probably help and it would require a request. At a town meeting would be funds allocated for a feasibility study. So that we would have an idea of how much it would cost. And the positive and negative impacts of that, so we could come back to the town and proceed or not proceed.
Is, so is that something that we could potentially get a grant, some grant funding for or something like that, is that?
You could, I mean, it, it, that's one possibility or the other is request money through free cash. Uh, or. Growth creation at, at a town meeting, just like we did a feasibility study. Well, we're doing a feasibility study for the fire station. Um, we'll be doing one very soon for the schools, but Dyson Elementary.
Something that we as a, uh, you know, as a commission would wanna support or put some energy towards or. But, you know, I'm, I think it's a great conversation, um, you know, to see about. How we can improve the infrastructure on those two main lines, right? That's the issue.
I think on, uh. At one point, the Planning Board did do something that they wanted to, we wanted to try to. Rezone a big portion of Route forty four. And there was some feedback that there was a lot of residential's, uh, residential properties and. People were shutting down the idea of putting business next to them.
Right.
Uh, we had a couple of properties that we had, I think, three, up to three hundred and fifty feet. And don't, don't hold me to these numbers, from the road end. That's how far the, the, the business would go, and I actually said at that time, I would love to see that extended. To the max, because if you have to have a business, you want as much space as, as possible and. Uh, I don't think it went anywhere, uh, the, the way we put it out.
It was defeated.
It was defeated, yes, um, so, but actually, I'm not actually sure that it went to the town meeting.
It did.
It did, okay.
Um, and, you know, as I think about it, it's, I wouldn't say it's exactly like a chicken and an egg, but it's. The idea of the. Infrastructure, I'm sorry, the idea of the expanded sewer as a way of addressing business or drawing businesses to an area that does not. Currently allow zoning in most of the area for those businesses. So, do you push that with the idea that eventually that'll happen or do you switch the zoning to say, you know, we have a business case? And now let's push the infrastructure that supports that business case. But as Joe just described, last time that was attempted was defeated at Town Hall, so. Um. I, I think there's an argument for trying again by the Planning Board.
It is always, yeah, you know, let's, um, keep pushing, yeah.
Yeah.
And if we don't have big business, it's going to hurt.
Right, right. Yep, yep.
And the other thing with the sewer, it keeps going up and up and up, when I first came on the board, it was a million dollars a mile, now it's one point five million. So the longer we put it off, the more expensive, and it'll reach a point it's cost prohibitive, too.
The, the sewer line, we should look into areas that are. Problematic, if I might say, that, that, in other words, people that are having problems. With it, you know, everywhere, that's where the sewer should be looked into, not. Areas that, like Route forty four. If, if we can't get business going up there, there's no sense of even trying, and these feasibility studies are expensive.
Yes, they are.
To no end, and I'd rather see other things being done than these feasibility studies because. A lot of us can actually. Say what the need is, we know what the need is in those areas. Doing a feasibility study and spending fifty, a hundred thousand dollars just on. A bunch of paperwork and, and getting nothing out of it, well, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not. Part of that, so that's, uh, I, I don't know if I made any sense to you, but.
No, you are, and a lot of voters feel the same way, cause we're getting pushed back on doing that with the fire. And less so with the school, because the school is reimbursed. Or fifty percent of it will be reimbursed for that feasibility study, but we're getting a lot of pushback with the fire. Not that they don't want something done. I'm sorry, what the amount of money to do the feasibility study to get something done.
You have to have the feasibility study, right, in order to get a grant or get.
Well, yes, if we were going to go that way, which the grant money for a fire station is. Isn't as much grant money out there as there is for, um, a school.
I personally think, and having said, saying this, I have absolutely no idea how to do it. So I'm completely unqualified with, but, you know, I think that in the latest economic update. Where Lizeth targeted, well, she targeted three properties, but one of them is completely off the table until. The ground is cleared up, which is gonna be years from now, but at least two properties, the mill and, you know, the old Princess House. Um. I think getting behind whether it's artisan zoning or whether it's, um. Working with developers who may wanna do something more if those property owners, you know, are no longer interested in. In properties and, you know, that's all private, but, um. I would like to get together with somebody who has more of a background in. Attracting developers to areas to see, um, you know. What interests them, what they can do, how we pull them into Dyson, with a focus on those two properties in particular. Um, and, um, see if somebody can make a go out of them, you know, and in what ways we can help with that. But, um, and I know that Lenny from, has some connections with people in Taunton who have been down this road.
Always an interest in.
Yeah, and, yeah, and so, you know. I had asked and he had said, you know, some of them might be interested in sitting with a couple of us and just like saying, look. Big picture, this is how it works, this is how you attract people, this is how you go get them, this is how you get their, their attention. Um, cause I said, I don't know how to do that, you know, um, but I think, you know, that. There's a lot of areas we could focus on, but I think at the end of the day, those two properties are the biggest. Bang for the buck if something were to go, make a go out of them, that's really, you know, big and beneficial for the town. And both in terms of getting businesses in there and generating tax revenue for the town, so.
But we have, President Solace is basically all right about, right, so.
Right.
All these stuff, so what will we get out of that?
What are those businesses in there, that's all we.
I have these factories.
There's one, there's one factory way in the back, there's Co-op way in the front, which is mostly office, um. I, if the rest are leased out, I never see trucks back there. I gotta imagine it's mostly being used for storage of some sort. I, I don't know, I asked Jim at one point what was going on back there, he said he would give me a list and then, I never really followed up with them and he didn't provide that, so. Um, so I think there's a lot, I mean, there's obviously a lot of space back there and whether it's being utilized in a way that. Really brings people.
I'm sure it's utilized, but I don't know for a while, but it is.
And on the assessors' tax rolls, there are no, other than the factory in the back. Uh, Co-op is a nonprofit, obviously, um, and then the property taxes on the whole. There's no other businesses listed at that address that we're collecting property taxes from.
Really?
No, I've gotten that list, there's nothing there. Makes you wonder, like, what are they doing back? That's why I thought, well, maybe it's just being used for, like, storage.
Storage, yeah, there's no.
Yeah, but that, that, that really doesn't make much sense, I mean, if it's a building that's up. There should be taxes.
All of those property taxes that the owner pays.
Okay.
But I'm talking of the individual businesses. Right, with personal property. Other than the factory way in the back, the owner actually, property owner actually owns that factory in the back, so. Um, they're paying for its property taxes, but I see no other personal property taxes coming from anybody at that street address. Co-op would, except that they're nonprofits, so, you know, that's the, that's the reason why I don't see that, but, I don't, there's nothing else listed.
It's, if it's being listed as a warehouse storage facility or whatever. Uh, the only thing you, you could, depending on what they're storing.
Yeah.
Uh, is maybe a, a forklift or something like that, you know, it's.
Yeah, I don't know what's.
Uh, I, I'm not really sure about that.
When does that work on her plan? Did she speak to the owners of those three? Businesses?
No, okay. Um, I believe Mike has reached out at least once, maybe probably more than once, to the property owners at Princess House. With no response.
Oh.
Now, I, my understanding is they're an overseas company, some perhaps it's just. The channel of communications is not great to get their attention, I don't know, but I, I think he's tried and. It's been too successful at, so.
But various reasons, the same thing is the case with Spring Street right now.
Yeah, um.
Okay.
So that's stopped there.
Uh, they're working in earnest on trying to open line of communication.
I've got a good friend who's a developer, I'll try, I'll try and set up a lunch, maybe we could meet with them and just. Yeah.
Yes.
I'll see if I can.
I was just, I was thinking that, if you could, that would be awesome.
Yeah, and it really is like, it's just a how to.
Right, just like, what, what do you look for when you're looking at a big project, if you know, what, what attracted you to do the things that you've done?
Yeah, right, what did the town do that pulls you in, you know, what are the things, the factors that brought your attention to a site and.
Right, exactly.
And Princess House, you know, and as Lizeth's proposal lays out, right on the water. Now, granted, I'm sure a lot of that is marsh, particularly in the back and conservation, so not applicable even for, you know. Walking trails or anything, but it's right on the water, beautiful sight.
Absolutely.
You know, you talk about the water, and, and last year, there was a gentleman from Rhode Island. Who wanted to do a lot with the waterfront down by the yacht club, as a matter of fact, he was looking to buy Shaw's boat yard at the time. And one of the things that he wanted to do. A boat manufacturing facility there. You talk about water, is that a viable option and? Would that same person be interested?
He came to our meeting.
He did, he was unable to, to reach an agreement with the property owner.
Right.
Right, that was at the end of the.
And there was some issues with septic sewage down at Shaw's. Which Princess House has sewage, as Mr. Carlos put it in, paid to put it in for Princess House. Back in the day.
But if there's no, no space to rent, or lease, or buy or sell.
Well, down the road, I'm saying.
Perhaps somebody with enough money would come in and say. Perhaps somebody with enough money would come in and say, I'd like to glide this place out and do something better with it. That's that's kind of the big picture of like. How do you attract people like that to have the money to come in and say like? I have some, this looks like a great site to do X. And if I can work with the current owner and purchase it, like to turn it into X. How do you get the attention of those people?
Very good question.
Yeah, I know, right? And you know, being like, you've got some friends.
Yeah, I just know. Paul knows him personally, so.
I may get back, bring back the tax assessor situation. I think it would be. A great idea. I'm looking forward to that. And also at the same time, invite the public.
Oh, definitely.
To attend, to attend that. And how do we go about inviting public to attend?
Yeah.
Cause that meeting, because that's gonna be. I think. Helpful to a lot of people, including us.
And I thought about that as we were talking before about attending to Aggie and our way of inviting the public to like that assessment would be. Emails and social media. And John's point was, maybe that's not cutting it, you know, in terms of the audience, you think of audience we'd wanna reach, so. I don't know what the answer is, you know, to your question, John, but you know, maybe. And you know, maybe it just comes down, particularly in a town like Dayton, to. The personal touch, which is you know, somebody, you tap them on the shoulder, you say, would you like to come? I think you might be interested. You know, and everybody does that, so. Although I know you did that to several friends that you have in town, inviting them to the Aggie event and they did not show anyway, but um. But nonetheless, maybe it does what it comes down to as well, so.
Would it be worth pushing the assessor meeting back to give us a good five or six week lead time where we could really?
It might be.
Try to blast it out several times, maybe send it to everybody on the business guide, any any contact info that we have, maybe every week. For five or six weeks. And then we could request the board of selectmen to maybe include it in the announcements at the selectmen meeting. And that way we would have, you know, we would hit people at least five, six, seven times. That would drive more.
Just if we were to do that.
Give me a blow.
Push it like November would be the week after November, you've got Thanksgiving, if we push it a month, now we're hitting.
Oh, yeah, now we're in Christmas.
Not next month. Yeah, January twenty twenty, that's really gonna do it.
You know what? That could potentially be a good idea, because if we, I could. Put a request in to a upcoming board of selectmen meeting in the next month and a half. Because under the law, I'm gonna be sending out the actual tax bills. The last week of December is when the actuals will go go out. Under the law, with the approval of the board of selectmen. We can include non-political municipal information as an insert.
Right. Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
We could include something to the effect of, you know. Inviting people, cause you know, they'll be getting a tax bill.
Right.
That often triggers a delusion of. Questions about why does my bill go up? How come this? How come that? I get a, I get a lot of those, cause I'm not an assessor, but I get a lot of those calls, because my name and phone number. So that could be a great opportunity to blast that out, because that really does usually trigger a slew of. Of assessing related calls every time the bill goes out, and we could actually include an insert in there. Um, I've been told by our bill printer that I can, the the fourth piece of paper is where it starts to increase postage. And under the law, I cannot do any inserts that will increase postage costs. So we have the bill and then we have the one insert for the elderly and disabled contribution form, which is one of the town meeting articles that gets included in there. So we have one to potentially two additional pieces of paper worth of insert that could go in there without increasing postage.
Right. But you, is there a way to only include the inserts in commercial? Or could, is it just like?
I probably could, because. I do send separate files for the real estate and personal property, so I don't know, I don't don't think I could break it out by commercial, but I could break it out with just. Actually, yeah, it'd be personal property. Yeah, so I I could, I could send it to anybody who's received a personal property could receive it.
I just want, I mean. There's nothing wrong with everybody showing up at such a meeting, but. Residential assessors could easily drown out.
Right, that's true.
Of our concerns about like. Small business and, you know.
Right.
Personal property tax.
Not why is my shame?
Yeah, exactly.
But if you said the meeting is just about. You know, business and any, any. Question that comes up about that, they, this meeting is not for that.
We could, yeah, yeah.
But even uh, residential homes, there's a lot of questions on that. Because the other day I had a person that came up to me and said. I don't know why, but my tax bill just went up crazy in the last. Year or two, so did you forget the value of your property?
Right.
And did you forget that? The um. Police station went up. And for the average home. Of three hundred thousand dollars. Your property tax went up, I forgot how much it was, that it was just uh, that it. I think, was it three hundred dollars? Or a hundred dollars for. Three hundred thousand dollars worth of value. Just for the police station. You recall?
That I I don't recall.
So if you have a property that's a million dollars. That if it was a hundred dollars and that means that property went up three hundred and fifty dollars.
Right.
Because it's worth a lot more than the average home. And of course, that came up as, well, that's not worth, that's not, that shouldn't be, that's not right. You know, well, I I don't even have kids and. You know, so those questions are questions that I. Think should be answered and explained to people. I don't know if you know that, it's not, I'm sure you need to know that, because. If I get a tax bill that's fifteen hundred dollars more one year than the than the than the last. So it's uh. It 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 it's just a lot of questions that that will be coming up and and.
But I think pushing it to January does make sense and. I think we can figure out, like, do you just wanna do a blanket to everybody in town, or do you wanna try to limit it to businesses in terms of that insert, if you get approval?
Yeah, so maybe if for our next meeting, maybe we could put an item to draft a sample. Of what that would look like. Uh, with a specific set date, if you know, draft a sample based on like the invitation in a sense. Uh, because that would give me enough time, cause I'll probably. Around December. Twentieth, twenty first, twenty second, that's probably when I'm gonna create the billing files and send them out, cause under the law, I have to have them. Postmarked prior to January first. And uh, the bill printer needs a couple of days to get them all ready and stuff the envelopes and all of that. So I usually do it like right around. Right around Christmas Eve. Merry Christmas.
Maybe it was from last year, but I just a sample that insert, just so we can see like. Graphics are or not on there, how much verbiage there is, like, so we just have an idea how much.
Oh, you can have a whole extra uh, sheet of paper. It'd be whole, one whole extra sheet.
Yeah, but what's on that sheet?
What are our limits in terms of how many words and space, how much space can we use and all that kind of crap for?
Oh, yeah, you should be able to include, so what will happen will be they'll just include an extra, um, I just send them. Full scale letter.
Okay.
And uh, it's really around four pieces of papers, like that fourth to fifth sheet of paper is where the postage increases.
Okay.
So as long as we stay under that, we can do for sure, one, eight by eleven. And um, potentially even two, but one would be playing it real safe.
Okay, all right, that's good. Um, any, any other feedback on this topic or? Yeah, okay. Um, the next item, just standing item to discuss any new businesses in town, I had mentioned that. Um, I hadn't really got up to speed with the new town clerk in terms of getting. Um, information on business certificates being issued, but I did touch base with her. So this is actually over the past three months, so um. But there's one, two, three, four, five, six new businesses in town. Um. Mind over scale coaching, it's a home-based business for weight loss. Um. It's opened. I don't know, I guess appropriate to list the owner's name or is that? The matter, is it? Maybe I should hold off on that. Okay. The next is the Crafty, Crafty Creator, but Creator is C R E A D as in David O R, because that's the owner's last name. So that's also an online home-based business, both of these are home-based. Um. Art Homes. Um, Bender Consulting LLC, which is a um, business consulting firm. Um, it looks like the owners, it is a home-based business, the owner's apparently moved here recently, so they've moved their business here as well. Um, Hound Dog Plumbing and Heating. And CNC Sheet Metal. Um, all of these are actually home-based. Um. The next item I have is a correspondence, non-public input. Uh, we have no public this evening. Um, approval of the minutes for both September twenty fifth and also September twenty eighth. So I had sent out September twenty fifth, um, John, you don't have a copy of September twenty eighth, I had, um. I was looking for my notes, but um. Really, that was um. We met on September twenty eighth from six thirty to six forty, I think. With a motion to recommend the board of selectmen to appoint Barbara Ktabia as a member. Uh, it was passing unanimously. That was the contents that Soul meeting, that's what the minutes reflect. Um, and if anybody had any issues with the minutes, other than John, and this is, I blame Microsoft Word for this, I didn't do this, your name is preparing J O H N. Instead of J O N, so I can actually fix that, but. Auto correct, um. I have a motion to approve the two sets of minutes.
Yeah, would you like separate uh, separate motions?
Maybe just, we can do it together.
I would like to propose a motion to approve the minutes for September twenty fifth, two thousand twenty three and September twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Both.
And uh, motion carries. Um, the next meeting date, if we stick with the fourth Monday, would be November twenty seventh, that's the Sunday after Thanksgiving.
Because Monday we're kicked out of here.
Yes, and we would be meeting at um, prime time. That evening. Um.
Six P M.
Six P M, so. Somebody wanna make a motion for the November twenty seventh meeting?
I would like to propose a motion to hold our next meeting on Monday, November twenty seventh at six P M at prime time.
Have a second.
Okay.
And all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, is there anything else anybody would like to bring up before we adjourn?
That meeting in January with the assessors. Will it be taxes in general or just commercial?
Well, our idea was, and this was, I think there were two questions at the end of the day, we'd come up with to give them to research. Um, was around. Commercial assessment, yes. Um, I mean, that's our focus, so and um. What what are the logistics? How do you get, how does it get figured out? All businesses get assessed, how do you figure that out? You know, that kind of stuff, so. Um, that's really the focus.
Are we gonna limit? To just business?
Well, that's the thing, if we limit it to business, we have so many home-based businesses in town that. Operating out at home, they're DBAs. They're small, I don't know if Paul could even. Pick them out to do the insert if we tried to say, let's let's include them or let's do commercial loan.
I could either include everybody or I could do just a personal property file.
Yeah. I I guess the default is we include everybody and we just make it clear that this is to discuss. Commercial. Small business, you know, um, issues around. And I'll make sure whatever verbiage we come up with that the assessors are okay with it, because we're putting them up front on it, so.
Yeah, I just think that if there may be some people, residential. Uh, questions that that. I don't think it's gonna be a problem for them to answer those.
Yeah, and if it's too time consuming, then as you know, Laura said, just tell them like. That's not. Yeah, we can't, don't have time to do all of that this evening and.
And there may be some residents that are interested or looking into opening businesses, and so they can ask the questions there.
I think I mentioned this, this was last year now, um. There's a business in town, home-based, when I asked them if they wanted to be listed on the town directory, they said, yeah, except. I'm afraid I'm gonna raise a red flag and then assessors are gonna be all over me and uh. I'm gonna have to start paying taxes on my revenue, I was like, oh, that's a, that's aside from us, I mean, I'm just. Beyond there, but that was their concern, it was like. I'm not ready to. Down that hole, I'm just doing this out of my house, small, I'm not ready to go down the hole of, I'm paying taxes on this, I'm declaring my money and. I don't wanna get there yet, so.
Right.
It's their choice, but um. But they're not listed on the town directory because of that, so.
So when you say commercial, do you also mean home-based business?
Yeah, because there's so many of them.
So I wouldn't use that word, commercial.
Okay.
Or maybe it's commercial and home-based.
Okay, so just make sure, yeah, we use some language, so.
And so that even include me, cause I'm not, I wouldn't, I'm not a commercial business, I'm an agricultural business.
I didn't know that commercial did not include agricultural.
Small business.
Yeah, I guess it'd be.
But it's not sitting on a commercial area.
That, it's true. It's not a commercially state property.
I think there should be some questions. Legal legal questions asked in regards to this. Oh, I'm sure the assessors will probably have an answer.
Right. Well.
But you didn't hear you.
Well, yeah, it could be a very informative session. Now, you, is it part of the regular meeting or is it gonna be just a like a forum?
But we had talked about it and we just thought we'd just do it as our regular meeting. Devoted, ask them to be such a to come and devoted to this purpose. We could just use one of our regular meetings to do it, so.
You may need to do an R S V P, you might fill this place up.
That'd be a nice problem to have.
Yeah.
I would love to see that.
Really, yeah.
Um, any other items that anybody wants to bring up?
No.
Um, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, I have um, seven oh six P M.
I'll make the most.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Great. Thank you, Paul, um, John.
Okay.
Bye, John.
Bye, John.
You have a good night.